So the other, the alderpersons can be in for the license and health discussion about.
Oh.
Yeah. We gotta get everybody up here. We're not gonna act on a court thing tonight. No, I didn't think so. No. Because. Well, that's fifty-one I wanna add. We need to add.
Yep.
Okay. We ready? All right, we'll call the Administration and Finance Committee.
The meeting to order. Point out to everyone that didn't just hear us talking, this is the Administration and Finance Committee meeting starting out. We usually start with license and health. We're taking this just a little bit out of order to accommodate the other alderpersons regarding one of the issues that's coming before, license and health. So, that was a long explanation. With all that, all five members are present, and moving to item twenty-two is resolution approving the 2019 Engineering Department fund transfers.
What are they? Chairman.
What are they?
Alderman Chapleski.
I didn't see him here.
Maybe you can see him here, but I can't do it here. There's a lot. I'm sure he's still.
So, the number is twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, and.
You don't have as much like in the hundreds of thousands, like eight hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's, this is the wrong thing.
Maybe we don't have the file yet? It's twenty-two.
So is twenty-three.
Yeah.
There's another page.
This is, this is about a transfer to Tapco. Looks like it's for the public.
That's a payment.
Right.
And that says Public Works. Here, flip this up.
And it's for the Public Works Committee.
That's jacketed wrong.
So, yeah, this is jacketed wrong.
It should be number twenty-two, right?
Yes, twenty-two.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, twenty-two. Okay.
So it's twenty-two there.
So let's hold twenty-two for a moment. And we'll move on to item twenty-three, resolution relative to agreement at the Village of Greendale for Public Health Services.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Weigel.
Second.
A second from Alderman Roeth, and yes, Alderman Chapleski.
We're not gonna need any more staffing on this, or we can handle what we got?
It's a continuance of what we already have in place with them, so no change in staffing.
Okay. Good. Yeah, and Bob, so what services do we provide for Greendale? Is it their whole health department?
Yeah, Greendale, it's largely environmental services.
Environmental.
Yep.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, environmental services, going inspecting health, inspecting restaurants.
Food.
Yep, food services, licensing. Periodically, any food complaints that we have that come to our attention, and it's really that extent.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
Remind me, Greendale's half of South Ridge? Is it part of South Ridge?
More of South Ridge.
Most of South Ridge.
Yeah.
Thought the line went through.
Yeah.
Okay. And then their little village down there.
Right. Yep.
And a lot of homes.
All right. Yeah, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
And.
City Engineer.
Mr. City Engineer, can you please come forward?
Do you have the wording for the?
For item twenty-two is the 2019 Engineering Department fund transfers. We have the wrong jacket here, but can you tell us about?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Visual, audio, visual.
Hi.
Basically, our bids were up thirty-two percent this year, which created some problems. I've been tracking this ever since I started here, nineteen ninety-one. This was the biggest rise we've ever seen. So, it caught me off-guard. I didn't budget for that. I think it's mostly attributable, attributable to Foxconn and WISDOT. I was telling Public Works, you know, in April, May, we were seeing this trend. The other thing which I mentioned in the resolution is that I did not budget to outsource the street lighting. That was not in my budget at the time. I didn't, had no idea that it was gonna cost, you know, five times as much to outsource it, so. I did make some corrections in May, June, canceled six projects to try and save money so that we wouldn't hemorrhage too much. So that helped. But, at least ten of these projects, from the moment the council awarded them, they were already over budget because the bids were so high. So, I guess in the future, I will try and cancel more projects if this happens, but we got to the point at the end of the year where there's nothing left to cancel, and I knew Hundred Sixteenth Street was a very expensive job, and I knew it was very much needed. The street was actually closed, so that was deteriorating quickly, so, so that's how we got here.
And so, this is a fund transfer. Where's the money coming from? We know it's going to engineering. Thank you, Peggy.
So, the amount, just so you have them, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand in the general fund, and another three sixty-three, three hundred and sixty-three thousand in the water utility. So the water utility one, obviously, is gonna come from the rate pairs. We're processing a rate case right now. We will obviously build this into it, but it's gonna take us a while to recoup that. The seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for the general fund. Thankfully, last year, we put some money away with our year-end remainder funds, so we'll be able to absorb that through there.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
Pete, you mentioned Foxconn. So, we're seeing this probably regionally around Milwaukee, Chicago's. So if, if we were like in Fargo, North Dakota, we wouldn't have anticipated this big of a bump. Well, except for they probably have the oil boom.
Piece of sack.
Yeah. Oil fracking. It's supply and demand.
Supply and demand. We had one bidder on National Avenue, the part from seventy, ninety-second to ninety-fifth, so, I mean, and that bid was thirteen percent high, and then they all, yeah. We had competition. I mean, I guess I will say too that this is the first year that we outsourced the street lighting, and I think a lot of the contractors were feeling uncomfortable because we'd never done that before, how that was gonna go. So I don't know if that affected their prices. We'll find out this year because we unhinged the street lighting. We're gonna do the circuits separately, and we're gonna do the streets separately. Concrete contractors don't like getting involved in things they don't understand, like electricity, so that may have, you know, upped some of the prices, I guess, because we were trying to do it all on a street-by-street basis. Yeah, Foxconn was mostly doing street and sewer work in the spring, so it was the same contractors. You know, Payman Dolan was working for them. AW Oaks does work for us. They were doing work for Foxconn. And then WISDOT let, like a record, I think I read in the newspaper, was the most contracts they've let in ten years or something, so, it's like two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. So, there just wasn't enough contractors, and I, you know, I don't think they're colluding with each other, but they do seem to have a general sense when the supply is low, the demand is high, that they could probably give a little more money than they used to, so.
Labor.
And we're not expecting any relief in, for five years, probably, right?
Well, the only thing I'm hoping maybe if we unhinge the street lighting, that that will rest, give some rest to them. Foxconn's moving into a new phase where they're not so much doing our type of work, they're doing inside stuff, and maybe we won't be competing with Foxconn. I haven't heard of WISDOT. I don't think they're letting as much maybe as they did last year, so. If you look at my chart, actually, the previous two years, it had actually gone down. There was that year and that year where it actually declined, so, on average, if you were to draw a line, it's probably been about five percent per year, but it just all happened at once. It caught us off-guard, so.
Copy of that.
Won't happen again.
It's a good meeting. We know it's. All right, any other discussion? Can I have a motion?
Move, trip, move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And item twenty-four, then, is a resolution relative of transfer of thirty-five thousand dollars from the assessor, through the assessor.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Weigel, and a second from Alderman Roeth.
It was three seconds at once.
Sorry.
And any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
I just wanted to say, I think everybody saw the email Jason sent, explaining how it is and how we came to be here, and we're, and this particular is project, this revale is actually under what was budgeted for it, so that's good to know, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-five is a resolution relative to authorizing single-source purchase for police canine.
Move approval.
A motion from Alderman May.
Second.
Second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-six, a resolution relative to accepting sole-source proposal of Munich Code.
Move approval.
A motion from Alderman.
Second.
Second from Alderman Roeth. Any discussion? Steve, please. Come on down.
Sure. I don't know if Kale wants to jump in too, but I just wanted to give a little heads-up that there's gonna be a slight change that you're gonna see with this particular thing. I think you had a copy of that ordinance, the resolution.
I think I had it. No, no.
Keep this one right here?
This one?
Oh, the looking at it?
So, one thing we're gonna be doing is using a system that's gonna create our ordinances for us, and it's gonna show what Kale wanted. You're gonna see is all the changes in red, and it's gonna be nice, but the difference is it's gonna be a PDF attachment to the legislative file, so we're not gonna be using this part anymore. So, I just wanted to alert you to that.
Some more stuff to download and open. Every time I wanna read it.
Yeah.
Right?
But the biggest part of it is digitizing, so when we're creating the ordinances and resolutions, once it's done, we just send off emails to me and the mayor, and we digitally sign. So there's not gonna be paper copies of stuff that's.
So the wrong things don't get attached.
Yeah. There it is.
On top of that, it's gonna make drafting way easier and simpler. It's gonna make the presentation of the changes way easier and simpler. Right now, it's a big hassle trying to even show any changes, ordinances given in the current system, so the functionality of this one is significantly better.
The codifier is actually gonna change, so right now, you go in, it's general code that maintains your, our municipal code. This is gonna be the new company, and once all the ordinances are done and adopted and published, we hit a button, and it's automatically updated, so we no longer have to pay for supplements.
Which obviously is a problem because ordinances have passed, and it'll be a few weeks before they actually show up on this, on the system.
Or a few months.
So it can be a long time, so it'll be nice once that happens.
Currently.
The new system, though, will be a moment someone presses a button.
And we'll be using it for the policies and procedures also, so you'll be seeing them that way.
And that's suggested for council rules and the fee schedule as well.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Chapleski.
Okay, how soon is this gonna be?
Morning.
Well, we're kicking off with some training coming up in the next few weeks, and then January one, basically.
Okay.
Probably a little bit of an overlap between the two companies, so we'll.
Alderman May.
You mentioned something about the downloads. We're not gonna be able to download them anymore? Or it's just gonna be a different type of download?
It's just gonna be like any other attachment within the legislative file.
Good. Okay. I just wanna make sure this is, and this is all searchable through our website for anyone in the public who wants to find anything. Good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-seven, resolution relative to accepting a sole-source proposal in tech software solutions for elections, planning, and administration program.
You're gonna keep reading until somebody makes the motion. I move approval.
Thank you. And we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Let me explain how this works.
Sure. Right now, we have basically every, all of our election information, machines, equipment, supplies, coworkers, in several different databases being Excel spreadsheets. And, right, and this system is gonna conglomerate that into one system that's linkable, manageable, that's got things like training functionality, where we can put up videos and people can watch, so I don't have to bring in people for onsite training all the time. It's got work order stuff, so when I issue setup for a particular polling site to the Public Works Department, they get all the data off of this. Right now, they keep, they're only like handwritten notebooks and stuff.
So the people working, so the people working in the polls, how does this affect them?
They will get, automatic, look, the system automatically generates letters, emails, and it's even got functionality with text message reminders, like the week before the election, you can send out a text message to them.
Okay. So when they're actually working the polls, the day of, we're not, they're not gonna have to touch this. This is all, this is all you.
This is all internal management.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Chapleski.
Same question. When is this gonna be up and running?
For the February election.
Any further discussion?
Any?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-eight, resolution relative to accepting the proposal of Vanguard computers for a whole bunch, sixty desktops and ten notebooks.
Move approval.
A motion from Alderman May, and a second from Alderman Weigel. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, geez.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Do.
This is all budgeted?
Uh-oh.
I like the yes from the crowd.
I don't like when you stand and come up here.
It's a little more complicated than that. So, in IT, I'm Tony Markachese, Director of the IT Department. Every year, in my general account budget, there's usually fifty thousand put aside to replace PCs across the city. We have a five-year replacement cycle. In my 2019 budget, that money has already been spent. We do that usually in spring, and that gives us all summer and fall to deploy the new computers. Because of the budget pressures facing us in 2020 and working with Rebecca, we really tried hard to not put that fifty thousand dollars in next year's budget, and it's not in next year's budget. But when we looked at that harder, some of the concerns we had with not replacing PCs next year was the PCs that were due to be replaced are still on the Windows Seven platform. It's getting kind of old. There's two issues with that, probably three. Microsoft is ending support of the Windows Seven operating system. Those desktops have a lot of security vulnerabilities that Windows Ten is not fixed. And third, they're just really slow. So the sixty or so employees in the city that still have those old desktops are losing some productivity, so.
How many?
Sixty.
Okay.
So, in working with Rebecca and Peggy, I think when 2019 XS, XS ones became available, we're kind of fast-forwarding the purchase dues, some money that's available this year to buy the PCs and get them deployed next year, but not using 2020 budget.
So it's carryover.
This was the carryover that was approved by the committee and the council.
I shouldn't have said carryover, right?
Yes.
Could've said carryover from the seats.
And a lot of the time, it's.
Thank you for coming to the board, Tony, and explaining.
Thanks, Tony.
And I think that's it. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-nine is resolution establishing health insurance plan funding. Yes, we're gonna hold this for.
Yeah, we're not gonna act on this?
We're not gonna act, but, yeah. And we're having a meeting on Monday, and you see that in your agenda too, Monday, December ninth, Administration of Finance special meeting at six P.M.
It's a regular meeting.
It started earlier.
Regular meeting.
It was five-thirty.
Five-thirty? Five-thirty again? I can check my calendar, because it's somehow mine, I have six. We can do five-thirty. I see nods for five-thirty. Mickey says no.
We'll see.
Oh, 'cause you gotta get out of work faster.
Talk to the boss.
I actually had five in my calendar, so.
Yeah, I did ask for five o'clock.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I think.
So what is it?
Right, I think six o'clock works best. That's our usual meeting time. That's, for Alderman Chapleski to get here on time, I would like six o'clock, unless somebody feels, okay. So, good. Yeah, six o'clock P.M., that's Monday, December ninth. Okay. And then, for items thirty-one to thirty-four, can I have a motion to follow the city attorney recommended?
Thirty.
Thank you for correcting me. Three, zero, thirty through thirty-four. Can I have a motion to do what the city attorney recommended per our agenda?
So vote.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Anything else possibly come before our committee?
Move and adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned.
Let's go to the license and health to order. Everybody's here. First thing we have, number fifty, Torren Brown. Anyone wanna come up here? You're gonna take over the ten, ten-twenty-two, the sixty at sight?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever done this before?
No, I was partnered with somebody in a different state, but not here in the whole line.
Are you familiar with the recent problem we had over there? Between two places?
No.
Okay. No, it was a big problem. One of the things is that you have to realize that you're responsible for people, not just, not just in your premises, once they leave also. You know, 'cause a lot of people, a lot of bars, what they used to do is just push the people out of their bar, figure it's fine, and the neighborhood has to absorb all the fights, whatever goes on, you have to live with the neighbors, they don't have to live with you, so. Is anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
Mr. Brown, I was looking at your application. So you've been working for Primerica for like the last twelve years, and that was here in Milwaukee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you also had self-employed listed for the same time? And what was the nature of that?
Barber shop.
Okay. And what was, and what'd you do for Primerica?
Life insurance agent, investment, that consolidation.
Okay. So, so for the last twelve years, you've been living in Milwaukee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But you said you had experience in the business somewhere out of state.
Right.
So that was previous to that?
I was just traveling back and forth. One of my partners moved to Atlanta, and I was just helping him out with this business that he got started.
Okay, what kind of business was that?
It's a bar line.
Okay. And, looking at your application, you put down you're gonna do fifty percent bar and fifty percent food. Is that what you did at the previous location? I mean.
It was a mixture of all, it was like entertainment and everything as well, but this is gonna be more so like an upscale lounge, not like a club or anything like that. So, it's more upscale environment, relaxation, appetite.
I'm just concerned, I just, 'cause I'm in the business, okay? I have been for thirty-nine years. I just don't see how in that location with that physical layout, grill behind the bar, that you're gonna do fifty percent food, right? That just doesn't seem like a reasonable number to me, I guess. And then, in the entertainment form, you checked off you're gonna do live music and concerts?
Oh, that kind of, that was a slash there, but I don't, it's not a big enough venue for it.
No, I was wondering about concerts, but you're gonna do live music?
Yeah, I'm gonna hope to, you know, get like.
And you checked karaoke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But you didn't check dancing? Like, so you're not gonna, we have a dance hall license in West Dallas.
Okay.
If you don't check dancing.
But it's not gonna be a dance floor.
Well, it's not just about dance floor, but you're gonna tell people, stop dancing if they start, if they start dancing. You may.
Might wanna check.
You might wanna revisit that, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay. Because we expect you to abide by the plan that you're presenting to us. Okay? So, and, and I guess, like, that, that checking out, that fifty-fifty split, that really concerns me, because that, to me, speaks to that you don't have a realistic view of what's gonna be happening in the business there. I think you're gonna be more like eighty-twenty, or eighty-five, fifteen bar food, you know, with fifteen percent food. That's the, that's, that's what I kinda see.
Well, the reason why I projected that, because I have another family member that, like, is trying to go into doing food, like, for a restaurant, so that's gonna be like the person that's over my kitchen area that's.
Yeah, there's no kitchen there, though, is there?
It's a nice setup.
It's a grill behind the bar.
Grill.
Is there, there's not a prep kitchen in the back or anything that I missed? There is? Okay, I guess I haven't, I haven't been in there lately. Okay, so.
Yeah, the former owner that was there was doing food as well, so.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's basically a business to help another business start.
Well, that'd be great if it was like an incubator kind of thing. So, we kind of give a little speech to all of our new bartenders. Are you gonna be working this, you keeping the Primerica job?
Yeah, that's, I'm self-employed with that. I'm ten-ninety-nine with them, so I'm in.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you're contracted with them.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna keep that? So you're gonna be the hands-on, day-to-day guy there?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna be, you're, I believe you're listed as the agent, you're gonna be bartending there also?
Yeah, I'm gonna have bartenders, you know, I'm in hours.
Yeah, so, long hours, I get it. Well, we, I mean, are you familiar with the laws? You have to buy from licensed wholesalers. You, you understand that? There's gonna be a licensed bartender on the premises all the time. Actually, anybody working either has to have a license or be directly under the management of a person with a license, that can't mean in the back kitchen, that can't mean in the basement, you know, under their, under their supervision. There may be an occasion when the police come in and do a compliance check with somebody under the age of 21 to attempt to purchase beverages, so you may face that. We also expect that there is a problem. If you just think you should call 911, you should call 911. We have licensed and trained professionals who'll come and solve your problems for you. And that's what their job is, so. And also, if that does happen, we want you to be cooperative, you and your staff to be cooperative with the police and help solve the problem, and not go, oh, I didn't see anything. I don't know anything. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I'm looking, what was the former name of it? The Star? What was the bar before that?
No, Broken Star is the one to the south.
Premier Club?
Premier.
Premier Sports Club. Okay, okay, that's why it's not, okay.
You know, I'm looking at your layout here, and, you know, the only food area you have here is all up front. You said that they're, they prepare it otherwise?
Yeah, it's like, it's like a prep kitchen.
It's all up front. Yeah, I've been, I've been in there once, years ago, and, which takes up about a third of the whole place. You said that capacity of 80 people?
Yeah, I think so, 80, 82 or something.
Moving far, there's 80 people in there. Is that what the fire department says? Or, where'd you come up with the 80?
That's what the owner was gonna establish. She's run that particular location for like 20-some years before she's sub, like, leased it out to other people.
Right, and, okay, well, well, you're gonna have the fire inspector in and everything anyway, so they'll look all that, but, because I remember it being just really small.
Yeah, I mean, like, right now, the reason why I know it's not gonna be a problem, because everything that was in there, like pool table, all that stuff, that's out. Everything else is gonna be couches, you know, cocktail tables, chairs, things like that. So, it's not gonna take up a lot of space.
Mr. Chair, just got a couple more quick ones to add. The licensed bartenders have to be licensed with West Dallas, not another community. We've seen that recently. A bar recently opened, made that mistake. And with those police checks, if it happens, you know, twice within a 24, I'm sorry, a 12-month rolling period, we have closed down bars for a period of time, 10, 15-day penalties, so just, our recommendation is just card everybody. Thank you.
And the other thing is that where you're situated, there's no parking lot. You're on a busy street. Parking's always an issue. Make sure you're courteous to the neighbors. And you do have that other bar to the south, which also eats up, fortunately, the one across the street never opened, you know, so there's parking. Any further, anything further? Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Yeah, this will be voted on tonight by the rest of the council.
Best wishes.
Good luck. Next we have item number 51. This is the ordinance authorizing some changes in our laws. Kale, can you kind of give a brief overview of this?
So, what you're gonna see is essentially what is also on your agenda, I believe, is number 55. However, it's been split up into two different ordinances based on discussions with Alderman Weigel. He felt that it would be most beneficial or efficient for you to talk about these two things separately. So, what's number 51, basically is making a change to the code that specifies general conditions that are always applicable to all licensees all the time. None of that is changing substantially. It's just making a few adjustments to make sure it's clear that these are the conditions that apply to every licensee no matter what. In addition to that, they're adding, or it's adding a subsection 12M, right below 12, and that 12M is gonna be what was discussed a couple weeks ago and earlier in the summer, which would allow the council to impose specific conditions on a licensee that only applies to licensee if the council specifically assigns that responsibility. And under, in 51 here, 12MA is basically a restriction against use of property, so it would require potentially a different type of primary business. This is intended to address places to avoid having only a bar. So, you can make a tavern, you could just let it be that, or you can make a restaurant required to be the primary business. You can make a painting studio being the required business. You can make a hotel being the required business. So, you can make something as a principal business, and that is established and stated what a principal business is. It talks about base of being more that than alcohol sales. The nice thing about that particular provision is it allows the council then, who is the fact-finder and interpreter of the law during a quasi-judicial hearing, to determine whether it still is a principal business that the council ultimately assigned. So, it's a good way for the council to maintain a level of control after a license is issued that otherwise you wouldn't have.
So, Mr. Chair, for example, hotel someday, decides they're gonna convert to condos with a lower-level bar. We could say, nope, we gave it to you as a hotel, as your primary business. You're not, you don't have a property right to that liquor license anymore.
It could be revoked as a result of this ordinance being passed, and that condition applies to a license. It allows you to pull that license.
But, they'd still have a property right, meaning that if we, to revoke that, we'd have to go through that quasi-judicial hearing.
Right.
Yeah, and it has to be, you have to make findings of fact that relate back to it's the same process. It just creates essentially an additional mechanism that you could utilize during that process that doesn't exist otherwise.
Got it.
And if you don't care, you just wanna issue a license, and there's no restrictions, nothing requires the council to put any of these specific conditions on any one licensee.
Now, what does, currently what we have in this year, what is the change going to do? What is, what is the main thing that's gonna enable us to do?
Under number 51, the only change is, nothing changes automatically. What changes is that the council has one additional tool now to impose a specific condition on a licensee saying you must be primarily something other than a bar. But, you don't have to do that with everyone. It just gives you the authority to do that. So, a good example would be, a couple weeks ago, there was a painting studio or a print studio who has a license. If the issue was, you didn't know how long that particular business was gonna last, there's nothing in the books right now that allowed you to do anything with that. If you grant the license, they can use the license according to state law. But, if you have this on the books, you could grant the license with the condition that it operates as a painting studio primarily. That way, if it ever ceases to exist as a painting studio under that definition, that license could be revoked at that time.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Alderman Weigel.
We see this all the time. People come in, and, and there isn't a recent case of somebody making an assurance it was gonna be one kind of business and ending it not being. But, we were talking about reunion on Greenfield Avenue. It's gonna be kind of a family-friendly bar with play area, getting sports and games upstairs and all that. And that's how it's presented to us, and we take that applicant at face value, and we believe he's gonna do what he says. But, without these teeth, he could, after two years, oh, the family-friendly bar business isn't that good. We're gonna put a dance floor in upstairs, throw in a band, and it could be something entirely different than what was projected to us. And this will give us the ability to require him, any applicant, to stick to what they put in writing for the application. This has nothing to do with the quota. We're not, this 51 has nothing to do with that. That's a discussion that we can have now or another time. But, this, all this really does is give us and the entire council more authority to hold applicants to what they say they're gonna do.
So, my question is, if, kind of like your situation, talk about a hotel. If the person does change the business, are they allowed to come back and reapply for a different license that would change?
They could ask.
What they're...
They could ask.
Ask for amendment?
Yes, so they could request that that condition be removed from the license.
Or amended.
No.
And, and, we can give it, or we don't, and we don't have to do it.
But, they still have the capability of submitting to us.
Something to change.
Okay.
Business change.
Does any of the other, all the persons that haven't heard this yet have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, this is, this is just 12, or 9.02, 12MA, correct? We're not talking about the other B through F yet. We're not talking about 9.01 yet, so, just wanted to clarify that.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Then, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe we're holding item 52, where we, the broader discussion on the quotas, right? We can...
If you wanna hold it, hold it. If you wanna start discussion on it, we can do that.
I think we've, we've had a discussion on this, I believe, already, right? I mean, I don't know that it's ready for a vote. I don't, I think there's probably some other element of concern about it. I think, I, I'd be okay with holding as far as timing for the applicants that we have in process right now. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are on it.
Let's hold it.
Well, we have everybody here now, so that's, like, we, we can at least, except for Alderman Barzac.
Except for Alderman Barzac.
Right, which I'm sure is gonna...
I know he's gonna wanna weigh in on it.
So, you finishing, you have something? So, one option too would be to not consider the quota tonight, but consider potentially the other conditions. You can do that as well, if you'd like.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair?
Alderman.
And Kale, what that would look like is basically approving number 52 without the section 9.01 change.
Correct. You just, someone's got to move to amend, to remove part one of the ordinance, and that would focus it only on the specific conditions.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item 52, taking out section 9.01. And for those, oh, I should probably wait for a second before a discussion. So, for those who aren't aware, 9.01 is lifting the quota entirely, so I'm saying we're not taking that up tonight. The second part is additional things we can ask a licensee to do, such as security cameras, things like that as part of their application, so...
And, Mr. Chair, if I could do a little more in depth on that. So, these, what we'd be talking now, for everybody who doesn't have the full text, is these would be restrictions that we could, we could place, we could ask applicants to put on their license as part of maybe a possible revocation or suspension process. So, if someone's operating a business, and we're uncomfortable with the way they're doing it, they're having repeated problems with, say, minors, or over-serving, or unruliness, instead of revoking or suspending, we could say, well, you can stay open, but, and there's a litany of restrictions that we could put on. It could be require cameras in your business that are accessible to the police, and that you'd have to keep those recordings.
Operational.
Yeah, operational, and for seven days. Or, you, let's say the place has a problem over-serving. Obviously, over-serving's already illegal, but sometimes maybe it's connected to how they price their drinks. Maybe they do all-you-can-drink specials, or maybe they're doing three-for-one happy hours or something like that. And you could say, why not, you can either be revoked or suspended, or we'll let you stay open, but no more all-you-can-drink specials. So, that's, that'll be another tool for us to use, you know? Again, not touching the quota, it's just giving us more authority.
Couldn't have said it better.
Mr. Chair, I guess I just wanted to clarify, these are optional...
Optional.
Restrictions that the committee and the council can put on, not mandatory.
Right, these are all optional. Anyone else? Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. As amended. I'm not writing on here, but as amended.
I got it.
I don't wanna mess them up. Okay, then, then we're gonna hold item 55. Everybody wanted to hold item 55 to talk about? Okay, we have item number 53, musical license for...
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. 54, various license, have a motion?
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And we have item 56, operation license for Little Upee about this.
If I recall this issue, the gentleman was gonna show us his revocation.
So, I talked to Attorney Serwin about this. There was apparently a mix-up with the DA. He is not gonna be charging him with some pending issue, and on top of that, he, essentially Nick said that he did present him with some sort of, he's off probation, there's no further criminal proceedings against summary tip. He's not in the system anymore, so our office would see no reason to deny this one.
Move approval.
Second. Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Alderman.
He was here earlier, wasn't he? Didn't I see him? Yeah, I did see him. I think he left. Okay. Well, he probably will be happy with the outcome anyways.
Did we tell him he doesn't have to?
We did, but he was here earlier. I saw him.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?